The July 2017 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the secretary please take role?
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Gattens?
Here.
Ms. Newcomb?
Here.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
Here.
Chairman O'Neill?
Here. Please stand for the pleasure of the audience. In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within 45 days of the hearing. If you are given testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with a testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait 30 days from the date of the decision to obtain necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain permits sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during the 30-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by the board shall expire 12 months from the date of said authorization. In accordance with 111 of the zoning ordinance, if you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek a special exemption. Remarks, anyone? Jack attests to the posting.
Hi, Jack Sweeney, zoning officer for the city of Scranton. Do solemnly swear that I posted the following premises with a notice of a zoning hearing for tonight's hearing. Agenda item number one was 1611 Prospect Avenue. Number two, 925 South Webster Avenue. Number three, 1625 Capous Avenue. And number four, 1305 Washburn Street. All properties were posted on July 3, 2017.
Okay, call the first case.
Item number one, Henry Mendoza, 1611 Prospect Avenue.
Good evening, members of the Board of Appeals. My name is Attorney Joe Tirana, and I represent Henry Mendoza, who is, in fact, the petitioner on property at 1611 Prospect Avenue in the city of Scranton. If you feel like you're having deja vu or if you think you're in the movie Groundhog's Day, it's because I had been here previously on this matter. Mr. Mendoza was here as well. Unfortunately, I had spoken to him just a little while ago. He was on his way here. He was having a hard time with the traffic on 81. And I would, because there's no new evidence being submitted tonight, I'm hoping that you may consider just moving forward instead of holding up the appeal in the evening. Last time we were here, there was an issue. Mr. Mendoza had bought a property that was previously three units in an R1A zone. Mr. Mendoza had purchased the property, however, off of a bank who had gotten it in foreclosure. And because of the time delays, the actual, and Scranton strident effort to make sure that homes don't remain vacant and bring down neighborhoods, Mr. Mendoza was forced to come in and ask for a variance to return it to three units. And in addition to that, there was an issue, as you may recall, with, we needed an extra parking space that we did not have, so we needed you to waive that requirement. When we were here, you all made very good points. And I don't know if I had come to suggest it, but at some point during the discussion, it was suggested that perhaps it would be less burdensome to the community and to the neighborhood and the neighbors specifically if Mr. Mendoza might look to, instead of asking for three units, simply forego one of the units and make it a two-unit multi-family property. What frankly I didn't understand, because of a language barrier, what I didn't understand was that I was calling a person in the property a tenant, and Mr. Mendoza's daughter, as you may recall. In fact, it's, there is, as your attorney will tell you, there's no such thing as a common-law marriage, but in all respects, Mr. Mendoza and the woman residing there is his common-law wife, and he intends on making that, that is going to be his residence in the point that he has a job that gets him moving back and forth to different areas. And he's going to live there. What he is proposing now would be to make the one unit, the one-bedroom, the two-bedroom, simply make that one unit that he would reside in. The other unit would simply be the rental unit. And when we were talking about it that night, the issue was presented to him so quickly, and I wasn't able to convey it to him in quite the right manner, but the numbers just didn't work out for him in his mind. The way I was explaining it to him, because he felt that because of the amount that he had to borrow to buy the property, he needed certain amounts of income. When we took a deep look at it, we found that in fact he would be fine in all respects with the, just the two units, as I've explained them. And there will be no additional need, as you all rightly pointed out, parking was tight in that area. Parking was not allowed, if I remember correctly, somebody pointed out maybe that parking was not allowed on the other side of the street, and that this garage might not be as accessible or might not have the inside storage for, to make it easy for, although it's usable by four cars, as you all know, the easiest parking spot is the place where people park, no matter who lives there or anything. So what I would propose and what I would ask on behalf of my client, Mr. Mendoza, is that you allow just the return of the use of the property to two units, as broken down as I've explained them to you. And there will be no need for the additional parking spot, and I guess that would be the only request that we have.
Attached to the application shows four off-street parking spots. They would need three off-street parking spots for the two units.
And I should mention that, Mr. Mendoza, in my discussions with him, and if there were concerns about the four spots actually being available in the garage, that you can put some kind of caveat or something that, you know, simply that would require Mr. Sweeney or someone from his office just to make sure that somewhere, point down the line, they are usable as four spots.
I remember this case, and I'm pretty sure that the majority of the board that night, we recommended the two.
Yes, sir.
We understand there's a little barrier there and everything like that, so from what I see, and I'll speak for myself on this one, I mean, the parking's there for what you want to do right now.
Yes, sir.
So without a problem with that.
Is anyone in the audience here to give testimony?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes. With the vote five to zero, it's been granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I really, on behalf of my client, want to thank you for your patience. And if I could have your patience one more second, I know my mother-in-law is watching tonight, and it's her birthday, so I wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Case number two on the agenda, 925 South Webster Avenue LLC.
Good evening.
Hold on, sir. Do you solemn, you don't raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
Andrew Bookin, 584 Finn Swamp Road, Lakeville, PA, 18438.
Thank you. You may proceed.
I represent this company, and they're looking for a variance. They had, it was a two apartment structure, was left unoccupied for several months, reverted back to a single dwelling. They want to turn it back into a multi-structure, two-family dwelling. I have the bills that the electricity utilities were on. The building was never abandoned, it was just vacant while they were doing, I guess, remodeling inside. And I know there's a concern about parking, and we do have four parking spots available. B-O-O-K-I-N.
Mr. Bookin, are you telling us that there are separate utilities for the two?
Yes, sir.
Units?
Yes, I have the bills here if you'd like to see them.
What kind of tenants are you looking to rent to there?
Just normal, whoever wants to, you know, like, I know they had special-issue people before in their buildings, and they're no longer in that business, they just want regular wholesome families.
So the property next door he does own, correct?
Yes.
And he was running some kind of treatment or center? What was he?
Halfway house or whatever you want to say, but they're, they don't do that anymore.
He was running a sober house.
Right, exactly.
Which the city basically told him that he would have to come to the board to get approval, and since then, he's told me that he's leaving that business and just going to rent it to, as the gentleman said, regular people. There may be a few occupants there still because they have leases. When the leases expire, they'll leave. It's what he, what the owner of the property told me.
I mean, because when I was there, Jack, it just seemed like a bunch of single guys wandering around, like, it didn't seem to me like a normal apartment building.
And it didn't to me either, which is why we've been over there several times, and I have personal assurances from John Louis that it will not be any type of sober house, halfway house, rooming house, anything of that nature. He assured me it would be, as this gentleman said, regular apartments.
Does this company own any other properties in South Scranton?
Yes, he does. They own three or four, I believe.
And then properties, is he running recovery houses and then properties, or are they?
Just in that one that was next door, and as you stated, they're leaving, you know, they're getting out of that business, if he hasn't already, so. For a direct quote, "It's not worth the trouble."
Is this somebody local that owns this?
They live next door to me, in Lakeville.
And I mean, in a case like this, especially with the history that's right there with one of their properties next door, for me personally, I'd rather speak to them, you know, as the owners.
The reason I'm here on this deportation is the fact, he's in France, his father took ill, and as we speak, I don't know if the man's alive.
I can verify that.
So, you know, this was just a last.
He did call me from France to say basically what he just said.
When is the last lease up, as far as the people that are currently occupying the place?
I couldn't honestly tell you.
This would be next door, actually.
This is not this place.
It's not there, it's the building next door.
Right.
Yeah, so I honestly couldn't tell you, but I was led to understand it's going to be soon, because he wants to get over with it.
I can speak, he told me that the sober house people would be gone by the end of the summer, is what he said to me.
I was going to say September, but I didn't want to give a date.
This was continued from last month, correct? I wasn't at that meeting, so I can be a little bit of a refresher as to why this was continued in the first place.
I'm sorry?
Why was this continued from last month?
Because the gentleman got called to France with this.
Oh, is that why? Because he got called to France?
That was, he couldn't attend.
Oh, so, okay.
And he didn't want to have, didn't want to have another continuance.
Oh, okay.
So I got the nod.
There was no testimony.
It wasn't because they didn't have anything, okay. I just, I just didn't know, okay.
No, there was no testimony at the last.
I would just let the man know that, you know, approved or not approved, we're going to keep an eye on the properties and to make sure he's going to do the right thing with them.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Because I know some of the neighbors that I've spoken to in that area were very concerned.
And I can say that our office has gotten many calls over several of his properties, so we're keeping an eye on everything as well.
Thank you.
Anyone here to give a comment on this case?
I'd make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes. With the vote five to zero, it's been granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, Jennifer Malcolm, 1625 Capous Avenue.
Want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Jennifer Keller Pizzano. When I purchased the property, it was Jennifer Malcolm, 9 Norman Street, Pittston, Pennsylvania.
You can proceed.
I'm making a request to return the property at 1625 Capous to a multi-unit dwelling, which it is, it reverted back to a single unit because it was condemned. When I purchased it, it was already condemned. My intention was to rehabilitate, renovate the property and return it to a two-unit property. An up-and-down, has two bathrooms, has two kitchens, and two bedrooms in each property. I was told by the city that I had to approach the zoning board to make that request, so that's why I'm here today.
Jack or Dan, do you guys know if city council is going to look at that, the two-unit up-and-down thing? Didn't we discuss that a while ago?
Yes, we did, but to my knowledge, it's not on any kind of agenda.
Okay, just wondering. Okay, you can proceed, Ms. Sir.
That's basically it, as far as that goes. It has, it has two services already, but there will be a lot of things that'll be brought up to code. It currently has fuse boxes, so we do have to get the electrical brought up to code, apply for the permits, and the city told me in order to apply for the permits, I had to first come here. So I knew where I stood as far as what I was going to do with the electrical, and of course, bring the plumbing up to code as well.
And obviously, with the property being condemned, she would have to follow each of the, each of the things that have to be.
That's correct.
Brought up to go to get it uncondemned.
Inspections and the like.
Right.
Right.
That would be before anybody could occupy the property.
Can we, can we discuss the driveway a little bit? You said. Oh, yes. The driveway, like, who owns the driveway? Because the next, the house next door, the driveway leads right back to their house and to the house that you're, that you're talking about. The driveway is a shared driveway on the deed for both properties. Do you have proof of that? Because? Yeah, I didn't bring the deed with me, but I could provide that to you, but it is on my deed that it's a shared driveway. Yeah, because if it's not a shared driveway, and your next-door neighbors are getting a little perturbed that you're driving down their driveway. Nope, it's definitely a shared driveway. In fact, I have a real good relationship with my neighbors, because we've helped them to maintain the driveway, even though no one's living there at the property where, that I own. We've helped to maintain that since I purchased it. We plow it when we get a lot of heavy snow, and they don't have a plow, so we've been helping them. So we have a good relationship with the neighbors.
Whose driveway is the property on, though?
Pardon me?
Whose driveway is the property on? Because if you look, I was over there and I took pictures looking straight back. If I'm sitting on that, standing on that sidewalk next to your house, four-foot sidewalk, it seems like your property line is right on the edge of, according to the fence that's in the backyard. So is that property actually on their property?
Mine.
So you own that whole driveway?
I don't, neither one of us. It's right on our deed that it's a shared driveway.
It's not unusual for, that's part of the city to have a shared driveway. There's a lot of properties in that area.
So I don't really know if anybody per se owns the driveway. And in that situation, if it's on both of our deeds, do you know what I'm saying?
It could be, it could be owned by both.
Pardon me? I've heard of shared driveways too, because I grew up with a shared driveway. But my problem is, is that when you go back to the driveway and you pull into one of your proposed spots, I got stuck, because you got two of your neighbors' cars parked right down, couldn't get out. And if you, when you try to back up onto the, you're going to be backing up onto their lot to get your car out. That's what I ended up doing, because there was two cars parked back there. I have the pictures. Okay. I'm not really, I haven't really had that problem, because as I see it, when you back up, you have to be able to back up into my property or the shared driveway, because they have a porch right there. Do you know what I'm saying? I saw the porch, that's where one of the cars was parked, and then right behind that was another car. So when I pulled into one of the spots, I almost didn't get out. Yeah, they, they're, they've been parking in their backyard, more or less. They don't park, because the, if you, if you look at the property, or you measure the property line, the property line goes right to like the middle of the driveway.
Are you going to, I'm sorry, are you going to pave the parking spot for them back there?
We're going to, first, we're going to prepare it, and we're going to modify, make a base, and then gravel, and actually after, after that all settles, because you know, if you pave it before you do all that stuff, you know, so.
I'm going to make that a request, that we pave that area back there, okay?
Sure.
And that's the entire backyard of the entire house? That little area where the? It's, it is not, the lot doesn't go all as far back. It appears that the lot was pretty much cut out of another lot at some point in time, early on. So you're turning your backyard into the, also, how much of a buffer do they need? She says she has, do they only need the four-foot buffer, or do they need, she has two four-feet buffers? That's what Mr. Sweeney. Is that what she needs? Just the four feet?
That should be sufficient.
Is anyone here to give testimony for this? Okay?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Did you guys have any other questions for her?
Well, I just want to be sure of what we just said, that when all said and done, that's going to be a paved lot.
We're going to add that right. We're going to make that a condition.
Okay, we'll add that as a condition. So you'll be voting on the variance with the condition that the lot gets paved.
And can I just ask a question, so that we make sure we have it stated? Is it, it will not be necessary to pave the driveway, or will it be necessary?
No, I think that the concrete.
Okay, just so I'm aware of what's required.
Well, I don't know about that, because the driveway ends right at the end of the porch, I'm looking at a picture right now at the end of the porch, so are we going to allow just grass, excuse me, grass until she makes her way into the paved area?
I would say from the end of the concrete.
Into the driveway?
Into the concrete driveway, then start the, start the pavement from there.
Okay.
So right at the end of, your two slabs of concrete gone, and pick it up there and turn it in.
Okay, no problem.
It avoids mud, just, it avoids mud in the yard just being torn up at that point.
Absolutely.
So then the driveway is going to meet the parking area, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The driveway is going to.
No, he, they don't need the driveway itself paved, the concrete's okay.
Right, but then it's going to.
There is no concrete.
Yes, there is.
Right. The end of the two concrete runs is going to pave back into the parking.
Now, from here, back.
So she's going to pave that way, so.
Yeah. We don't need to.
No, I just have an issue with turning back, and we were talking about that, is turning back yards into parking lots.
Do you want me to make a motion again, or?
Yeah, with the condition.
I'll make a motion with condition.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
No.
Ms. Newcomb?
No, based on what I just said with the driveway in the backyard.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
No.
Chairman O'Neill? With the vote three to two, it's been denied.
Okay, so that means that it cannot be a multi-unit property, is that what your attorney said?
Right.
Okay, all right.
I would suggest calling me tomorrow, and I'll explain it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number four. 1305 Washburn Street.
Hold on, we have a challenger, one second.
We're going to bring him back in for a second.
Abraham, can you step back from the mic for a moment, please? No, that's fine.
Yes.
I inadvertently voted no on that. I'm not in favor of putting parking lots in backyard, which I stipulate every meeting, but sometimes there's instances where the house sits vacant for too many years, and because of that, I did speak to one of your neighbors directly across the street. His house sits up a little bit, all the flowers around it, and he was more than happy to work it done there so far, as far as maintaining the bar, the house and cutting the bushes down. So at this time, I wonder if we could do a revote on this, if possible.
Sure. You can re, make a new motion.
I'll make a motion with the condition.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
No.
Mr. Paul Mottessa? Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with the vote three to two, you've been granted.
And I apologize for the.
I really appreciate it, and you won't be sorry. It'll be a really nice house when we're done.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you. Abraham?
Want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Abraham Prosper, 1425 Piston Avenue, Scranton, PA, 18505.
Marion Letances, 1313 Foxview Drive, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania.
Okay, thank you, you can proceed.
Wait.
Sure.
And what was the first name again? I'm sorry.
Marion.
Marion.
So we're here to try to open this daycare center, or as you put it here, to get a variance to reopen this daycare center. I've been running daycare centers for 21 years, and we found this location, and I think it would serve the community well. It's a good location.
And actually, it actually was, had started, was there for 20 years, and they just left eight months ago, so I know it was like six months that you have to have, when it's closed down, just come in front of the board. So we're here now to try to get variance to reopen the daycare. So it's basically the same use it was, 20 years.
How long ago was it, over six months?
It's been eight months.
Eight months.
Yeah, eight months vacant, but it's been there.
They were there for 20 years.
Yeah, 20 years before the eight months, correct.
Well, I'll ask the question, I think everyone on the board probably seen there, where's your parking for that?
For the, for the past, yeah.
So can I, can I approach you?
Sure.
So this is the parking in front of the building. We're not counting on parking in front of the building. I have 1319 Luzerne Street as my property, and we have five extra parkings. That's number one. Number two.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
1319 Luzerne Street, right behind, the street behind. This is on a daily basis, okay? On different days that we went out.
This is, this is your parking?
This is in front, no, but as a backup, we have 1319 Luzerne Street with five extra parkings.
Jack, are you aware of this, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And my experience has been that in a daycare that size, there's only three classrooms. In the summer, four, because you add the school ages in the summer. But during the winter, we're not going to have babies, we're not going to, we only have two-year-olds and up. So during the winter, they'll actually. So, during the winter, there'll actually be only two parking, two, two employees there, and maybe the director. So, my experience is that you probably will need one parking if that, because the people who have a parking, this is what most people do, so this is why I have those.
And also, um, sorry, also next door, the owner's here now, he's in the process of trying to buy a lot next door to the building, that he, he want to convert to a parking lot as well.
Well, he doesn't have it right now is the problem.
Yeah, he don't have it right now.
And part of the problem we have with this, the application, I'm going to speak on my own here, um, it's hard for me to go up to your property, which I did, and try and imagine parking, when this should be provided with the application. And I went and looked at the property, and now you come before us with parking that's across the alley and down the street a little bit, um, so, the only visual I have is your picture. I'd rather see this stuff with the application when you, when you apply.
And my question is too, you said you have five spots at another location?
Yes, right, in the next street, yes.
The next, where, where is that exactly?
1319 Luzerne.
Luzerne Street.
Which, which in my expertise, we will not need five parking spots.
What is-
I've been in daycare centers-
Okay, well, wait, hold on, let me finish my question. So, let's just say you have those spots there, you could put your employees there, that's fine. I like to try to work with people, but you have not one spot, um, at the daycare?
In the front, there's a-
Right, that's, that's, you can't, you can't use the one in front, we need some sort of-
Off-street.
How many spots do we need altogether?
Well, let's, let's go back a step.
You said next door-
How many children will be at the daycare center?
Well, this daycare center will probably have about 40 children.
About 40 children.
Out of those 40, you can count 25 being there at one time.
Um, so the 40 would not be there at any one time? The maximum that would be there at any one time?
Probably have 25.
So, the maximum will be 25 at one time?
And actually-
So, so she would need three off-speed, off-street parking spots for-
So, five, five of them?
One, one per, ten, every 10 children, so.
So, three, and then-
So, three.
Two, one for each employee?
Plus two employees, she would need five.
Okay.
And 1319, is that lot next door with the overgrown?
Yes.
And how many spots were you planning to put?
I have five for the daycare. There's eight altogether, you could fit like eight cars, but I-
Who owns that?
I do.
You own 1319?
Luzerne Street, yes.
No, I'm talking about, oh, you're talking about 1319, we're, we're on Washburn Street.
But, but, let's-
The street behind.
Wait, wait, I think everybody's a little, try to clarify that all one more time, so.
So, I own, in the street behind, I own a property, 1319 Luzerne Street, and it has eight parking spots, and-
Now, I thought you said five.
No, no.
Oh.
Eight altogether.
She said eight.
But five would be available for the daycare.
Oh, okay, fine.
But how, Luzerne doesn't connect to Washburn Street. There's an alley behind Washburn Street where the daycare is.
They would, they would walk two blocks. I mean, most people, you have to walk, if you take a bus, you have to walk a block if you have, that's the parking available for them.
That's not even, is that-
That's way too far.
Within the parameters, or no?
That's a, it's not, it's not 200, 200 feet.
Well, let me ask this question, where did they park before with the Head Start building for 20 years?
There was, Head Start was there and they never had parking.
That was a grandfather situation.
Yeah, they was parking in the street for the 20 years. So, they had, and, once again, the, the owner's here and they, they had never been one problem with parking in 20 years.
Right, they never, they, he says they've never had a problem with parking there either.
Well, there was lots of issues with parking, because I, I live right there, so to drive past Washburn Street during pickup and drop-off time, that was not, it was not, it was not a, it was not a situation you wanted to, to drive through. Sometimes the roads were blocked.
No, well, there were, what is it, a parking lot there?
Excuse me?
There's an apartment, a lot there.
Yes, there's, there's, uh, three apartments there, so there's eight parking spots, so three would be for the apartments and two for the, and five for the daycare.
So, these people that are going to rent the apartment are going to walk, walk all?
No, they're, they're in the same area, because the apartment building has the parking lot in the backyard behind it. This is behind.
You, you can, you said it's a parking lot, playground. You cannot do that.
For a playground?
That's what, that's what-
No, we're not talking about the playground, you asked me about that.
So, Dan, they need seven, basically, aren't they?
I think, I think we're, we're mixing apples and oranges here. I think, and, correct me if I'm wrong, the property that you own presently at 1319 Luzerne has rental units. Okay, so you have so many parking spots for the rental units, plus five for the daycare.
Right, yes.
The property, the subject property, the one at 1425, or, I'm sorry, the one at 1305 Washburn, doesn't have any off-street parking within the parameters of that, other than the front, other than what you showed in the front?
Other than the front, which has like two parkings in the front.
Okay.
But it does have a yard, which he's asking about.
And the yard would be used, the yard would be used for the playground.
They have a play, yes, yes.
There's two different properties she's talking about.
Well, what I, I don't understand, like, you, and what you're telling me is that you have a lot of back, that's where you walk down, a lot of, walk down, one, two, one, two, almost three little blocks to get a parking lot. Am I understanding that?
Well, if, if I hire someone and I tell them that's where their car has to go, then that's where it has to go, they could take the bus to work. I mean, how many times-
Well, I think it exceeds the, the limit, I think it has to be 200 feet, correct, Jack?
I'm sorry.
I think it has to be 200 feet within-
Yes.
And that, that exceeds that.
I think it's actually 400, but it, it-
Oh, I'm sorry, it is 400.
It's beyond the 400, yeah.
Yeah, it is 400, I'm sorry.
No, I, I asked you before, there's a vacant lot right next door to 1305. Who owns that lot?
Um, if I'm mistaken, is bank-owned, and the owner's here now, I think he's in contact with the bank trying to buy that property, so that question probably more for him.
Well, if he wants to come up and offer testimony?
Yeah, yeah, but here's the thing, guys, we, we go through this like all, all the time and-
You don't have it yet.
We love business and Scranton and things like that, but as you could tell, I think the parking plan's a little bit, you know, yeah, non-existent. Um, you might want to, I mean, we could still vote, no problem, I'm just speaking for myself, not everybody else, but it, it, you seem like you're very short on the parking, maybe it'd be better if you actually, um, found out if you could get that lot and lease that lot, but, um, you know, like I said, if you want to have them come up or whatever.
Maybe we should have the, have the other gentleman offer his testimony.
Yeah, even if he's not able to purchase, maybe you can lease it, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Paul Esbianski, 902 South Main, Old Forge.
Okay, you may proceed, Paul.
Okay, I, I've owned this building since 81, I had my business in there for over eleven years, and then I leased it to Head Start from 93 to last fall. So, the issue with the parking is correct, of what you're saying. The lot next door was condemned, the house next door was condemned about five, six years ago, and was out-of-town owners who, once it was condemned, quit paying their mortgage. Uh, first, I think it's, uh, Wells Fargo owns it. My lawyer, Bill Jones, is in communication with them. Of course, you got the, you got the lien for knocking down the building, they get, they have their, their lien against the previous owners, so it could take time. Uh, I want to buy it, because it's perfect, whether these people move in or somebody else does eventually, because it's always been a business. It's always, the building was built maybe 80 years ago, and it was always a grocery store, sporting goods store, Russo had some kind of store in there before I bought it, and, uh, I want to continue it, I want to continue it as a, a business property, that's why I want the property next door, but I can't say I'm going to get it, I, I'm trying to get it, uh, I, I don't know for sure, but it would be perfect. Um, the only other option I'm thinking, the playground area in the back, I don't know if you have to have that, I mean, these people know the rules. Uh, that originally was a parking area too for like three or four cars, but if they have to have a playground, then that would, that would rule out.
The only, the option would be to use the playground as parking and do an inside playground. That would be the other option. The state goes with an inside playground, I don't know what the city of Scranton requires. That's, could be a whole.
But didn't you just say that you were, that there were only two rooms or three rooms, and you were going to use all of the rooms if you put a playground?
No, I didn't say how many rooms it was, I said we can only use, we're only, we're not going to have babies or, or toddlers, we can only have two and a half years and up, so therefore it brings it down. There's about five rooms in there. One, two, three, four, four and five, the one-
And when the Head Start was in operation, was there anybody, was anybody living upstairs?
Pardon me?
When the Head Start, Head Start was in operation, was anybody living upstairs in the apartments?
Yes, always.
And where did they park?
On the street. Where they can find- On the street, yeah. One, it was one apartment.
I thought you said it was three apartments.
I think that's where you got confused, she owns the building where she's saying this extra parking's at, and that's where her three units are at.
There's one apartment in this property, that her own apartment, property, there's three apartments.
Well, and maybe there's some people in the neighborhood or whatever that have something that they could be rented or whatever, but, I mean, you guys, I don't believe are even close, I, I think you're every spot short.
I think the major problem is pickup and drop-off, you need just a little section there to-
The front has a 10-minute pickup and drop-off, that, I think that's well-established, I think that the, the other problem would be like, there's a parking lot, which I haven't asked them, but there's a parking, like a car dealer or something down the street, that I was going to ask them if they would rent us some spots, you know, but I just found out this now that it has to be 400 feet, because I would have used my own property, you know, but you, you're telling me it's got to be 400 feet or less, is that what you're saying?
Or close, pretty close.
Or closer. It's about a block.
Can I ask one question? How do you determine how many parking spots you need?
The ordinance says one for every 10 children, plus one for each employee. So, that's how it's determined how many-
Plus one and a half for every apartment.
Right, plus you have an apartment, so one more.
Are we able to use the backyard and do an inside playground?
Yeah.
Well, that would be an option.
Yeah, it's not going to give you enough spots anyway.
Yeah, I said you're drastically short, and I said that, I'm-
It has three spots.
With, with the apartment, you actually need six spots altogether, five for the day, four and a half for the daycare and one and a half for the apartment, make six spots. So, you technically need six off-street parking spots on that lot or within 400 feet. Obviously, if you could buy the hot, the property next door, that solves it, if you could get a, a lease agreement with the other people that, the car lot, uh, then that would solve it also.
A block.
But I'm thinking at this point, you don't have either one of them, maybe you might want to continue this case until you're able to provide one or the other.
Or approve it contingent to us getting the parking spots?
No.
No, continue it.
Like I said, you're not even, if you were close, I would say, hey, why don't we take them, I mean, you could do whatever you want, but you don't have one spot, that's the whole, you're, and you need, what, seven, eight?
Six.
Six.
I, I have a question, just on your numbers.
Plus the two apartments, though.
If you're at your max, you're saying, is 30 going to be your max, 30 children?
Probably about 40.
40. And you're telling us you only have ten, two employees for 40 children?
No, no.
How many, how many does the state require?
What I'm saying is that when you have 40 children enrolled, basically what you're going to get is 25 per day, you're not going to get-
But that, that's not a guarantee, I mean, so we have to, we have to look at your peak number, which could be 40.
So, they need eight spots.
And if you're having two-year-olds and there's, and there's ratios and you have to, and you follow those rules, you need one.
We're not having two-year-olds, that's what I said before.
I thought you said-
Three, uh, two and, two and nine months and up.
So, you're allowed, you're allowed one, you're allowed one employee for every, every 10 three-year-olds, so, if they're all going to be three, so, well, then you would need four, four employees, so that's another four spots.
It's four spots.
So, that's more spots you need.
Plus she said a director also.
Plus a director, so it's five, and then you're looking at the apartment above it.
All right, so can we continue with that?
Two.
One.
One.
But let me ask you this, the apartment is independent of, of this school, so why would the apartment tenant, who's been there for, he hasn't been there, but there's been a tenant there forever, even be considered in this?
The apartment itself is grandfathered in.
Yeah.
But now you're changing the use of the whole building, in effect, okay, even though you're not changing because Head Start was there, but now you're starting anew with, so now you have to encompass the, what's the use of the entire building. So, that's why they're concerned with the parking for the tenant that's there. If it was just the tenant that he's, they're grandfathered in, so it wouldn't make any difference, but you're now changing the makeup of the building.
Once again, like, you guys aren't even i- in the realm, like, if you were close, I would say, yeah, you know, we'll take a vote and see how it goes, but you're not even in the ballpark.
Well, let's continue it and, and we'll get the parking space.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Should we make a motion? Can we make a motion?
Make a motion to continue.
I make a motion to continue it?
I'll second it.
Mr. Walsh?
I, yes, to, to continue it, yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Ms. Milkum?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Metessa?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with the vote five to zero, it's been continued, I support. Thank you very much.
So, how many parkings total do we need?
Okay. If, if you're telling me the maximum at any one time is 40 children, that changes it. If maximum is 25 children, that changes it, you have to come back and tell us exactly what the maximum is, but you need one for every 10 children that are going to be there at peak hours.
One for each employee and then one point five for the apartment.
Yeah, so if you had 25 kids, that's two and a half, the apartment needs one and a half, that's four and a half, plus one for each employee, if you have two employees, that's six, if it's three employees, that's seven.
I'm confused with the apartment, because I thought that had nothing to do with us, I thought that was grandfathered in.
Not anymore, not if you're, the unit itself, the building itself now has to be considered, okay?
The apartment is one and a half. All right, so it's about six parking lots.
At least six.
All right, thank you for your time, gentlemen and ladies.
All right.